I'd like to call the city council meeting of March 24th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. Approval of minutes, we need a motion to approve the March 10th, 2025 city council regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or roll call, please?
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four presentations, item A fiscal year 2526 city of prosperity's budget presentation, five-year capital improvement plan, tourism, motor fuel tax, water sewer, special service areas, solid waste, road construction, debt service, and police pension fund. We'll turn this over to Sheri.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We are on our second workshop, presentation for the budget for fiscal year 26.
Patrick, could you put it up on the board, please?
So today, we're going to be going through all the other funds. We hit the general fund pretty hard last meeting. We are going to cover all the other funds as well as our current capital improvement five-year plan. The fund balance projection, we're going to review again. It was in last time's packet, but we're going to now address the other funding funds. Let's look over to the second to the last column on the right, and if we go down that net revenue and expense column, that's going to show you what the net revenue per this proposed budget is for each of those funds. All of the ones that are, have a minus sign, those are negative results for the proposed budget, and the letter next to each one of those is going to explain why that is. So we'll start from the top. For the MFT, that one is minus 1 million, over here, 115. That's because we're spending down the fund balance for the Owen Street flood control project. Historically, we've tried to hold on to those funds until we came up to a big project that we wanted to use the funds for. It's easier and a little bit more efficient submitting to the state one giant project as opposed to many little smaller ones. It just multiplies the paperwork that we're required to submit. So this year, we're going to be spending down that fund balance that's accumulated over the past several years and still having an ending balance of 6.3 million after that project in fiscal '26. The TIF fund, the only one we have currently right now is the Mirror Point. We are collecting property taxes in that TIF fund. Last year, we collected 23,000, we're projecting 25. The $75,000 expense that's included in there is for some professional fees, and we'll get into the details of what's happening with that TIF fund later in the presentation. Tourism is next. We're also spending down the fund balance of that one for capital. The Phase Two Winkelman lighting project is planned for fiscal year '26. DEA is negative historically because according to the program requirements, we're not allowed to budget for revenue that we do receive. Last year, we did not budget revenue, but we received 445,000. So that money comes when the state releases it to us after their calculations and investigations, and they assign us our percentage that we would be sharing. SSAs, those funds are there, those expenses are there for just in case we need any professional fees or legal fees related to those SSAs. Otherwise, the fund balances are building up and are there for future reserves or maintenance or whatever we need for those SSA areas. Parking fund, this year, we budgeted for the stairway repair for fiscal '25. It didn't happen, so that is a cost that is moving into fiscal '26 budget. That is why we're spending down that fund balance.
Sheri, a quick question on that one. The revenue for that parking, is that all in parking fees or is that a general fund transfer?
General fund transfer has been about 115,000 for the past couple of years.
There's about 15,000 parking fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's flat. Those don't seem to be going up or down since COVID. They've been pretty steady. So that covers up through parking on the negative fund balances. If you look at the rest of the letters here, GHIJK, those relate to the bottom table that's showing what our fund balance is anticipated to look like at the end of this budget cycle. Non-spendables include like prepaid's and other deposits. Public safety restricted is for seized assets, DUI money that we received, and narcotics. We have our emergency reserve, according to our fund balance policy, is 30% of the budgeted expenses. Our $5 million reserve that we talked about a few months ago in our meeting, we made a resolution to fund that five-year plan, $1 million per year for five years. And then the remaining balance is unassigned, and you'll notice it's 37% of next year's expenditures, which is pretty solid. Any questions on that? Okay. Now, we're going to move into the specifics on the other funds, starting with motor fuel tax fund. I'm going to let Bob take the mic for a little bit.
Thanks, Sheri. So on the motor fuel tax fund, Sheri kind of went into a little bit of the expenditures. We had the Owen Street flood control project plus about 400,000 for street resurfacing. We're anticipating, or IML is anticipating projections of about 710,000 budgeted, which is a decrease from last year, about 2% decrease. IML is projecting there's going to be a decrease in the motor fuel tax funding of that part. Regarding the Mirror Point TIF, what I'm understanding is the owner is actively trying to sell the property right now and talking about the cost for this to keep it, make sure we're, the cost for the Mirror Point TIF, there's about 75,000 is allocated. Those professional fees for potential offers, just to make sure. On the tourism fund, we have a budget decrease in the revenue section about, to about 550,000, which is about 21% decrease from fiscal '25. Majority of this is going to be because right now, there's a hotel currently for sale and another is filed for bankruptcy. So we'll be losing some of the revenue based on that. On the expenditure part of it, we still have the promotional dispersments, we have special events coming out of there, grant dispersments, about 114,000, police services, mowing equipment, police services reimbursement of 161, and capital improvements, as Sheri talked about, the Winkelman Street lighting project of about 93,000 coming out of the tourism fund Regarding the DEA fund, like you're saying, the revenue is hard to project. We don't know when the federal government will release funds based on the officer out there who works certain cases. We don't know when those funds will be released, so it's hard to budget for that. But on the expenditure side, the budgeted items are there, 366,000. All those items would be tactical unit and gang suppression details, the flock camera system of 26,000, the body worn cameras that are now state mandated as of, I believe, January of next year. That's at 27,000. The tasers are 6,000. And then you got the Safety Act mandated training, the police officers have to go through a 15,000. Also, two police vehicles at 115,000 coming out of the DEA fund. As for the solid waste fund, there's no change in the rates for revenue on this. Expenses, we have service charge to the general fund of 105,000, and swing charges are projected to increase 6,000. We just don't know when that is going to happen. Or, I'm sorry, 6%, not 6,000 in the thousand mind right now. And then we have inter-fund transfer of 50,000, same as it was in '25. Regarding the SSA funds, Sheri touched on this regarding that there's no significant revenue streams in the SSA funds, one through four. We have the tax levies totaling 209,000 for funds five and eight. Expenditures, there's no significant expenditures planned, but they do, we do put in there budgeted items just in case there needs to be some type of expenditure or something comes up to pay for certain things like professional fees or legal fees for those funds. As for the parking fund, the revenue budget is flat, about 14.5 for FY '26. In '25, we had about 13.5 come in. And again, with the expenditures, Sheri talked about, we have stairway repair, about 52,000. Any shortfall in the operating revenue for operations will be funded by the general fund, around 115,000, which was the same in fiscal '25. Regarding the water fund, there was, we did an analysis and a calculation regarding the water rate this year, and there was a water rate increase of a dollar six, which 96 cents of that is fixed cost due to the increase in expenditures to maintain the operating the water system, and a 10 cent increase in the variable costs, which is per thousand gallons, which is a 1.2% increase, and we've seen that from the Illinois American Water on the bills they charge us. So there's a recommended, today on the agenda, there's going to be an ordinance, a first read for the recommended water rate of $61.35, which is a dollar six increase from last year's water rate. Regarding the debt service funds, the property taxes for the '24 tax levy request is budgeted at 1.5 million. That's to cover the debt service requirements for FY '26. The expenditures is just the debt service payments for those requirements. Under the sewer fund, revenue is flat at 810,000. No planned increase in the sewer rates at this time. We are also in the process with our collection agency going, trying to recapture some of the outstanding balances that have not been paid over the prior year. So they're still with the collection agency on that right now. The expenditures, we're looking at 796,000, which includes 328 for ongoing system improvements. These are included in the proposed CIP plan that will be over later, and overall costs increases due to inflation. Onto the police pension fund contribution. We have annual tax levy, which is capped at a 5% annual increase, can't go any above that. Contribution from the general fund continues to increase as pension costs rise at a rate greater than the 5% tax levy. The required contribution for pension fund actuary, from the pension fund's actuary is 1.585 million with the minimum state requirement of 627,000. The FY '26 proposed budget includes 100% of the requirement, which is the tax levy at 496.750, and the general fund contribution of 1.088 million. That would be, that proposed would be over 253% of the required state contribution amount. If you look at the next slide, this shows the funding status as of FY '24 of 71%. And this graph, or this picture here shows where we rank with the surrounding communities. We're at 71%. We're one of the probably top three, looks like, out of all these in the 70% range. A lot of that is because of the $2 million city contribution that the city gave last year, which helped increase this funding level, and also we had some nice market returns last year because of that, too. Again, the market also plays a big part in the funding percentage part, and hopefully we'll see some better returns as we look at the market currently right now, which will hopefully get a little better. So the recommended for the city pension fund is the 100%, the actuary of 1.585 million to fund the pension fund. So any questions regarding the funds or the pension? No? Okay, so we're going to turn it over now to the capital improvement plan over to Mark, who will go into more detail on the capital improvements that they have.
I'm just going to jump in a little bit here just to go over the numbers before Mark joins us with the projects.
Much appreciated.
Okay, so here's our plan, '26 through '30, that's our five-year plan. Our total expenditures based on the projects that we've identified in the five years are 42,931,000, and then we have future projects of 11,614 already identified. The second table below that shows where the funding sources are going to be for those 42 million in projects. The first one is highlighted in red to be determined, funding from referendum and/or grants. Those numbers across the five years relate to specific projects that we have planned in the package totaling 29 million over the next five years. All the funds are contributing for their specific projects where they can, capital fund, MFT, tourism, DEA, water fund, and sewer. They're all assigned certain projects that we're going to plan to focus on over the next five years. The next slide shows the grants. We've already been awarded to date. That's pretty current. Peter put this together for us. Thank you, Peter. We already have those monies awarded, but depending on the timing of the project is when we'll receive the actual monies based on costs incurred, and then we get reimbursed. So summary of the costs and the money that we have on hand is at the bottom right. Our projected cost for the five years is the 42 million. At the end of '25, we anticipate a fund balance in the capital fund of 11 million, and then more funds coming in over the next five years. Our general fund transfers of $1 million a year, and we're estimating and projecting from the solid waste fund, $50,000 a year. Besides that, we have grants already awarded to the city, 6 million, and then we have the 23 million of to be determined. So our costs of 42,900 minus project sources of 46,400 will leave us a fund balance at the end of April 2030 of 3.5 million. Our future costs as of right now are identified as 11 million, but as we know, as the next five years happen, there'll be more projects added to our list as we go forward.
Sheri, a quick question on the previous page about the proposed funding. The first line.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Sheri. She should find her own attention. The 4 million, 436, 490, is that grants related to Willow Road and Owen?
Yes.
Because it, that's not referendum money. That's money we have. Everything after that is referendum.
Correct. We're going to go into the details as Mark goes through the categories, but Owen is the first one for fiscal '26, Owen Street. And then the referendum money will pick up in '27, '28, '29. So we'll see that on one of the upcoming slides.
All right. Thank you.
So we're going to start with the street resurfacing, and I will turn it over to Mark.
All right. Let's take this out from in front of you. Thank you. I'll stick off that. Good afternoon. Street resurfacing, as we've talked about, we had a referendum years back, and our streets were mostly repaved at that time, and we're looking for reeducating our residents about what a referendum is in the years, in the next year to follow here. As we work through, looking at the numbers here, we're imagining that this is going to be about a $16 million project. Fiscal years '26, '27, '28, '29 would be about 4 million a year. We've just in the process of completing the 25, or the 2025 road evaluation. It's not prepared yet for us to look at, but all the field work has been done, and it's looking like this is exactly the path we're going to be on. So more to follow on the street resurfacing project as we get a little more details on it, but this is a nugget for everyone to start understanding that we're headed towards. Looking at this, the map of the city, pretty basic, engineer put this together. Pavement assessment's going to be completed, and then the design engineering is the first step of it. Big nugget of what we have tonight is stormwater projects. We have a variety of things going on. Highlighting it, the flood control project for Willow Road. We're also talking, we talk about Owen. It's the same project, we just split it. Originally, Willow Road was going to be razed. We had Owen to raise, and we split that to raise Owen and do the compensatory storage ahead of time while we're still trying to get the design and engineering proper for raising Willow Road. So we're moving forward with Owen and the compensatory storage. We're happy that a bid was received, multiple bids, we came in with a good contractor, and that's going to get started in the next couple of months, we're looking at. So very pleased with that project moving forward. The financials are on here. We've been talking about this one forever. So it's nice that we're finally moving forward with it. Next one down here is the Hillcrest relief. You guys are looking at that. I want to kind of give you pictures here as we talk about this. I'm sure everyone's seen, but this is Owen, and this is what happens every time we get a good rain. We have half a dozen homes that have no access to their property. They have to park a block or so away, walk through neighbors' yards, and just to get to their homes. So that's the area, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it's on the north side of Hillcrest The next project we're talking about on here is the Hillcrest Storm Relief Project. We have seen time and time again, after major events in the city with high ground level saturation and then incoming rain, when Owen Court floods, Willow Road cress over, and when Willow Road cress over, the lake swells and it flows east through people's yards and disrupts their lifestyle and hits their window wells. This project has been talked about for years. It's installing a pipe at the north end of Hillcrest Lake that will take the overflow and run it north up to the creek. I use a different phrase, but I'll use the phrase, the "oh crap" pipe, that once it gets to a certain flow level, we need to keep it from destroying people's property. So that's this project. We're very fortunate, we're working on a good funding source for this, and it's marked as to be determined, but we're getting closer to that. So that's a very positive project for everything. Elmhurst Road Culvert. This is just located about 5, 800 feet north of city hall here. At the same time, when our town, our city swells from the flooding, we have had multiple times we've had to close Elmhurst Road. There's a small diameter pipe that runs from the west to the east. It can only take so much. Once it's charged, the sides of the road fill up, and then it overflows, overtops Elmhurst Road. And unfortunately, our staff is tasked with closing the road with barricades, police department, public works. We've had Elmhurst closed for days at a time back in 2017 and 18. It's been dry these last five years. A lot of folks forget that we've had issues like this, but it's real. We had cars get ruined, people trying to drive through the water. We had homeowners who have had waves slap against their house because of somebody driving through the water. And as you all know, 83 is a major route through town. It's hard to divert traffic around it. There's not an easy bypass. So this is a great project. Just want to keep you guys aware that it's still moving forward. Elm Street Culvert replacement. This is happening right now. We're very pleased. This went through the bidding process. We came in with some great bids. A contractor that's done work for us in the past actually was the low bidder. This project started last Monday. This is located over by the library and the Morava Center, and it's putting in an overflow pipe. So when everything is charged, the water does not top Elm Street and take out the ball fields. Most of you were around in 2017, 18, the Park District lost use of their fields repeatedly, and once that road overtops, the fields get washed out. They have a 50, 60,000 dollar cost to redo the fields. And on top of that, as Joe has put eloquently many times, it's not just replacing the field. They lose an entire season of ball. It's a, it's a community impact. They have to rearrange schedules, try to move things around, and it's, this is our hometown fields. So we don't like that to happen. So this project is excitedly, it's moving forward, it's happening right now. The timing was orchestrated between the library's needs, the park district's needs, and the city trying to get the project done to not impact summer programs at those locations. So that is in the progress right now. Our levy wall, we've talked about this for a couple of years. There was a accident at the intersection of River and Milwaukee Avenue, a crash by, suicide by car crash that occurred there is probably the best way to say it. Unfortunately, we've been working, we're very fortunate to get funding to take care of the replacement of this. We've had delays through permitting, through the design and engineering, through the contractor we had to do this. We are hopefully going to get this project moving this year. It is still in IDOT's hands for a final round of permit approval. So when that occurs, a lot of you folks remember the Mount Prospect Levy project that took out a lane of traffic for quite a long time just south of this. Milwaukee Avenue will be reduced down to one lane during the process of this replacement. It should be a few months of an impact. Unfortunately, the traffic signals need to come down, and there will be Jersey blocks along the roadway. But Milwaukee being what it is, I don't think it's going to be that detrimental to traffic flow because it's pretty fast, and it's, will be well-marked. So that's coming up this year. The Levy Slusgate project, this is the last piece of the puzzle to get the area remapped through FEMA for all of our residents and business owners on the east side of town. This has been a very long project to get everything lined up. Every time, all of our folks, our engineers, our designers, the Army Corps, IDNR have things in place, we hit a snag, whether it be in cooperation with other agencies or funding. Now the snag is, we sent it out to bid in January, we were all excited, only one bid came in, it came in double what we expected. We rejected that bid. We looked at the plans, we re-engineered to make a more palatable project at a better cost, and one of our partners, IDOT, determined that our intergovernmental agreement was expiring too soon for us to rebid it at this time. So even though we have a better project in place that we're going to be able to fund, we're going to be stalled out waiting for an intergovernmental agreement at the city's end and the village of Mount Prospect. We are fast forward, getting things signed. Unfortunately, it has to go through other agencies. IDNR is exceptional, they're going to work through it quick. Army Corps of Engineers has a fast-paced plan. IDOT does not. IDOT has their pace, and we're going to, once everybody's signed, we're going to work on helping, try to encourage them to help us move along a little faster. Hope that's the polite way of saying it. This is a very important piece. This gets done on a parallel track. We have an engineering company that we've hired with the village of Mount We have an engineering company that we've hired with the Village of Mount Prospect working together to get all the necessary paperwork and project prints together in parallel for the Clomar, the Lomar, the revisiting, the remapping to be done as soon as the last piece of the pie is in place. So we're very pleased that we're at least running in parallel. Same neighborhood, just west of the wall, we've been working with a joint project with the Park District who uses this space in the Willow Trails Park area as a major project. It's the biggest flood management project on the east side aside from the Levy Wall. This is going to give us more detention, it's going to help out our multifamily homes that have taken water many times over there. We've got a nice spot to put water in a property that we own and we work together with the Park District, they do events and they main, they maintain the property even though it's owned by the city. We have everything figured out for the park area and through the back of Willow Woods or Willow Trails and to Willow Woods. Currently, our engineers are working with the PabCor ownership on the final piece of the pipe where it's going to run. It's not on this picture we're showing because there's been a couple of different ideas of how it's going to make its way from Plaza Drive out to the River Road, which is going to go into our Levy pump system. Exciting and this, even though we don't show it on here with the final design, once the Easeman acquisitions are all set, we'll be able to really show what our plan is and going to get it bid out later on this year. Big, big project for this side of town. It incorporates some changes into the park that River Trails has been working on for these last couple of years to improve this area that up until the last few years has been kind of a eyesore. And the park really stepped up on this portion and are making it nice and working with us on it. So we're very pleased. This moves us to a wish list item in our capital plan. It's called East Arlington Countryside. The other phrase that I should have put on this slide was the Dorset Area. It was originally called East Arlington Countryside and we've morphed it into the Dorset Area Plan. This print that we're looking at here was originally compiled back in 2018 and 2019. So we're still moving for, forward, trying to come up with funding, a better plan and a source to take care of this depressional bowl area of town. To throw numbers out here that aren't on the paper, back in 2019, this was listed as an $8 million project. So obviously there's changes, pipe diameter, land usage that may raise or lower that and obviously there's been inflation a little bit since then. That takes us from stormwater to sidewalks. Before I jump right to sidewalk, everybody comfortable with what we talked about for stormwater? Just figured instead of at the end all of a sudden going back five steps. All right, we've got a lot going on. I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces in, a lot of irons in the fire. Nothing's fast, but when it's done, it's done right. All right, sidewalks. We have multiples to talk about here, we're going to make it through these a little quicker. We've got Camp McDonald Road, Elmhurst Road North, Waterman and Burning Bush. Camp McDonald Road. We are currently still in the engineering phase of this. Let me get to my money slide here real quick, please, a second. Sorry about that. We're still in the design engineering phase of this. We were notified just about a week and a half ago that Mount Prospect is looking at doing some work for sidewalks east of Wolf Road in the Mount Prospect jurisdiction area. They have inquired about extending a, basically a pedestrian multi-use path from their border, which is Mandell, which is one block east of Wolf, over to where the Prospect Heights Bike Path connects to what's going to be our future sidewalks. So our proposal is the orange line on the print. Working with Mount Prospect, there might be a little change over at that intersection over there as they work towards their goal. And if I could say it twice, we're having a very good relationship working with Mount Prospect on different projects and getting to the right answer for everybody. So we're pleased that they came to us and expressed their interest in trying to extend a pedestrian use path along there. More to follow. And it will back up real quick. And obviously, this section of Camp McDonald Road goes from Wheeling Road off to Wolf to our new sidewalk, which connects to Metro. We do not currently have a plan from Wheeling Road West. Even though we have it on paper that we'd like to put something in there, we're not in any design or engineering phase of that at this moment. We're working towards, it'll probably be talked about next year, but it's still years off. These don't happen very quickly because of the engineering, the design and the funding, which we've been very fortunate on the funding side to get grants and representatives helping us out.
And to show how far out it goes, Willow isn't even on here yet, right? That was one we just talked about, so.
Correct. Right, that's absolutely.
So that's five years away, it's not on here yet.
One that we've been doing really well with, we've got funding for the design and engineering of the sidewalk for Elmhurst Road North. When we say that, this is the area just south of Hince Road. From Hince down to our city limits, which is the north edge of the Forum Apartments that are owned by Wheeling. Along this stretch, there's a couple lots that are Wheeling jurisdiction that have sidewalks, the rest is all ours. Engineering continues on this and funding is in process. This has great opportunity for funding because it's right next to the high school. So that's why this project was chosen and it's a small bite of an area that is desperately in need of better surface transportation. Being that close to the high school, we see school kids and just regular pedestrians walking along the edge of the road all the time up there. I think this one's a favorite from a few people up on the dais. This is the Waterman Sidewalk. We had Hershey High School Engineering Group get with us last year, a bunch of kids excited about doing a project. They proposed this, they did some preliminary engineering. We committed that this was a good project through city land. It's the right-of-way for Waterman Avenue, if it was to continue straight through, that's where the road would be proposed and it's, like I said, the city right-of-way. The advantage to this one is it's not a very long project and permitting wise, we only have to get a permit from Cook County for a wire, for the work on their right-of-way. Other than that, it's all ours. These are projects that are nice, they go a lot quicker, we only have one other governmental agency to work with. And Cook County has already in the past marked this roadway as a crossing location. There's a sidewalk, as you can barely see on the print, that already touches it and on the south side of West Willow Road, there's already a crosswalk sign and a marked delineation area. So I don't want to say it's a slam dunk, but this is, these are the, the projects that are easy to get. These are the ones in the express checkout line. Every once in a while, you have to have a popper that you get in there. Burning Bush. This one is on the plans to do, we do not have funding for this one set up yet. This is about $125,000 total cost. This connects Piper Lane with Apple Drive. This is on the northwest edge of the Willow Trails Park. On the east side, this is the missing link for folks that are walking down from Wolf Road to the park or east from there. There is no sidewalk along Burning Bush at this point. There's two, I call them mule paths on the edge of the road where people have walked through and the school kids. Right at the corner of Burning Bush and Piper, every morning at around 8:00 AM, there's at least 70 kids that get on a bus. So any of you have driven through here in the morning, you know the, the path of what people are walking through here. Kids get off the bus, a lot of them walk down to the park after school. So in the winter time, they're on the road, in the summertime, they're on the road. It's just a project we need to come up with funding for, but it's a feasible, I don't want to say a simple project, there's some utilities in the way, but that's why I put it at the $125,000 mark. You'd think if I'm putting in a sidewalk for a couple hundred feet, it shouldn't be that much, but unfortunately, there's things that make it cost money. Great project, a lot of endorsement from residents in the area. We've had residents in the Piper and Apple Lane stop over at Public Works over the years asking us when we're going to get it in place. So we have community buy-in and we know we have a need. So that's kind of where we're at with the sidewalks that are currently in the mix or on the, on the chart. We have talked about the Willow Road project between Shawinbeck and 83 and as we dive more into the details and some preliminary engineering, it'll be on our radar. Again, that's an area that needs funding and there's a lot of stormwater involved in that. We had a preliminary show of it during our strategic meeting and we'll get along with that. So sidewalk wise, that's currently where we're at. I'll come back to, any other real questions on sidewalks at this point? All right. We'll go on to sewers. It's always a highlight. We want everything to flow downhill. That's why we spend our money. When it doesn't, we have a lot of problems. I'm very happy that our last years since we've taken over the system, we make great improvements every year that are unknown to anybody. Residents continue to flush the toilet and they have no idea what goes on in the background. You know, we build a building, we build a road, we put trees in, it's, it's stuff that everyone sees. This sewer work is invisible. We've had residents talk to us that have troubles in the past and after we do a project, they've had years of great, well, no issues, I guess best way to put it. So sewer work is definitely the invisible project. We did televising in 16, 17, 18 and follow-up in 19. We're getting ready to go back into another round of that eight years later. We did our triage when we first took the system over. We fixed a lot of problems, we've relined every year some sections, a couple hundred thousand dollars worth. And now we're back to looking towards the future of another televised event of all the pipes and a new triage list. Because a pipe that we looked at seven years ago that had a crack in it may now be at a critical point of failure. Other lines that we looked at that had cracks, they were candidates for either A, digging and fixing or relining. A lot can change over the years. We've found pipes that have had new fence posts pounded through them. Directional bores from the gas company or from a utility power or cable TV. So when we do these televising events, we really get a lot of good data. And again, our residents don't see the end result. They just flush the toilet, they know it works. So I wish it was a, like a road paving job where everybody goes, oh, they finally did it. Again, this is invisible work. Water system. We're very pleased, I should have put a water system map in the, in the list here, but I did not. Water systems, the, the best way to have a water system is to have a ring, a system that if you have a failure in one point, you can shut valves off and keep as many residents back in, connected and getting positive pressure as you can. The way our system is designed, we don't have that for a good section of it. Wheeling reached out to us a couple of years ago about doing an interconnect between their water system and ours. Originally, the proposal by Wheeling was to aid them in case they had a loss of positive water pressure from their provider. And then the conversation morphed into, well, boy, this will help both of us. So we've gone back and forth with this, I know I've presented this to council a couple of times and this project is finally moving forward where we'll have an interconnect project. The interconnect would be roughly near where St. Alphonsus is. It's the end of the Wheeling system and it's the end of our system that goes up Wheeling Road. The advantage to us and to them is if we have a disruption, we have a fresh source of water. We do have another interconnect over near Fairway Estates that comes off of Illinois American, but Illinois American is our feed on this side of town. So there is a possibility that Illinois Americans, their water feed could stop. This would give us another source. So it's a great project. We do have a couple of other water projects that we're going to talk about here. So this will give us the ability to keep water pressure to an area in case we have a water main disruption by either a break or by losing Illinois American feed. Cauldron. I apologize, this map is orientated to the side. North is to the right. As you'll see, Camp McDonald Road on the left is the east way. A water main going north up Cauldron Drive would connect us up to Newcastle, which is the back of the Lake Claire subdivision. This would give our system a ring of itself, of its own for the Lake Claire and St. Al's area. This has been a wish list item for years. Unfortunately, the price of this keeps going up. We project this to be about $950,000. This is in the fiscal year 27, 28. It's down the road. The engineering for a project like this would take six to nine months. At this point, we're not doing engineering, we just, it's a wish list of something that would definitely benefit our infrastructure and the water world. It's just the funding part of it we'd have to work out. But just so you guys know that there, just because what we have in the ground now doesn't mean it's ideal. That is, that covers sewer water. If I go back here a little bit real quick, sorry, on this original, we had the, the water main, we had the interconnect. We also have things pushed out in the future here for 26, 27, 27, 28, to start doing design and proposals for in the Rob Roy area for doing water main replacement. Getting a design, getting some troubleshooting done of some pipes in there. We've had some failures. It's an original system that was put in when Rob Roy was developed. It originally was fed off the deep well, which is now our pump station and reservoirs. Those pipes were all installed, they did have well water running through them for years and they're all ductile iron, so there have been failures. And we need to start thinking about what our failure rate is going to be and what choices we have before we have failures. With the design, there's companies out there that are doing a great job now with actually lining water lines like you do a sewer line. Instead of having to dig up and disrupt the whole neighborhood, there's less holes and it's a fairly, I don't want to say easy install, but it's, it's a better, it's less invasive than digging up the whole neighborhood. So as we start getting into that later this year, we're going to talk more about it and then for the following fiscal year, we'll have a basic plan in place that we'll present to council. And then also passed on there is a Camp McDonald Water Main Extension. As we worry about our water resources, we have conversations about where can we connect? We have a great agreement right now with Mount Prospect for water at the Camp McDonald and 83 area, City Hall, Police Department, Walgreens, right around here and a couple of other customers. If we could put a water main from here down to Wheeling Road, the same path we were talking about a sidewalk, we would have the opportunity to purchase water from Mount Prospect or Illinois American or have another interconnect. We'd have options. Obviously, any option we talk about is a million bucks. So we already have a high water rate for our water service customer, so we're cognizant of that. We don't want to triple or quadruple our rate for a resident. We do want to have the ability to provide a good quality product and keep them in their home. So we have to balance those things out. But it's on the list, just in case I was wondering, what happens if? This is what we're talking about.
So those two projects, the sidewalk and that water line, are they on the same side of the street or? What I'm getting at is, could they be done together to save some money overall?
I, probably not.
Or they just two separate projects?
Probably not. The initial view of the water main, as we look through the other utilities, there's FWRD interceptors, there's some sewer lines in there. But for a water main, putting it in the roadway is a pretty, sometimes a better plan. You can dig a pit, you can directional drill and push the water main to the next pit, kind of like the way Arlington Countryside was done. You already have the real estate, you're not messing up anything else. So even though it's the same path, it So even though it's the same path, it might be not done in the same turf. So where, but when we talk about stormwater, it has to go hand in hand because you're at that elevation and it's all about the pitch and the grade. So... But we're, those are a couple of things that are out there that we're working towards. The Camp McDonald water main may be kicked a few more years and a few more years. We've been talking about it for a while, but it's still part of the overall process that as a community we like to have. I think that's it for water and sewer stuff. Anybody... All good? Keep recapping a little bit, sorry. All right, Sherry, this is all you. No, I'm just kidding. Other improvements vehicle coming, part of our capital plan. We work with the NRC on Hillcrest Lake stabilization. We're doing some work that we forecasted last year over at the Public Works property. We're expanding the back area. It got delayed due to some MWRD standards of watershed. There was a process that we were following that they told us to hold off with, that there was going to be a change and it didn't change, so we're back to Plan A. This is lowering the back area to increase... I do have a picture on here, I don't believe. There it is. The back area, expanding the back parking lot area for more equipment, storage. Our parking lot is kind of like City Hall where it's a little tight. We have semis come in for delivery, salt, rock, sand. They pull in the back, they get landlocked in there. Opening up this back area would give us the ability to have trucks turn around and give us more room. We are also talking about eventually putting in some type of structure back here, whether it be a pole barn type thing or a two-car garage. We're constantly short on space for the needs of the Public Works and the Police Department. We store multiple vehicles and a golf cart and equipment for the Police Department and the Public Works office. This may give us an opportunity to put a building back there to meet more of our needs. So the first step is getting the land to the right level and the proper drainage and making sure MWRD is happy with what our procedure is. I'll go back here to this. Equipment. We're purchasing a small excavator this year for a lot of water, sewer and stormwater repairs. That's coming out of multiple funds, the water, the sewer and a little bit out of the city fund. We have projected a pump replacement at the wellhouse for the next fiscal year. We'll talk more about that as we go down the road. Our pumps are currently running. We just have one that is meeting its life expectancy. It's been in place for 15 years running. The flail head mower, we talked about in the tourism district. Part of that mini excavator is going to be able to have a flail mower, which is a big four-foot head that cuts grass basically, cuts trees. It's a, I call it a, it deconstructs forestry. We'll be able to use that along the tourism area to keep the side of the shoulder cleared. Right now, it's a very labor, high labor use for us to lift up machines over the guardrail and block traffic. This machine, we'd be able to, with the flail head, with safety behind us, drive along and clear the side of the shoulder. We've all seen it on the highways. We have a big arm and a head that cuts the grass. We'll also be able to use this for our Levy 37 area. We have a requirement by the Army Corps to keep a certain distance back of all of our walls. Again, we spent a lot of time and effort. So we're, this is a multi-use piece of equipment. We're very excited about it. Winkelman Streetlight Project, Streetlight Project. That project will start in the next, I'm assuming, month or so. Our contractor hasn't given us a start date yet. This is adding lighting along the corridor between the Hilton and the Crown Plaza. This project came to light six years ago when we did the roadway, but we couldn't get it done in time. It got pushed back. Now with funding from the tourism district, this project is good to go. We have on here the Apple Street Lighting Project, which has pushed back a couple of years. It's based in the tourism area. We've been kind of holding off on this one. We really forecasted a change to the Pabcor property once the levy was certified, that there might be some change in that property. So we're kind of trying to line things up a little bit. So we're going to continue to kind of push the Apple one down a little bit as we see how our Levy 37 certification happens. There's already lighting along that area, it's just not the greatest. The River Trails units have lighting, the strip mall or the Pabcor property has lighting, but it's not streetlight. And as soon as our park starts, we have streetlights. So that is, it's on the mix, it's our, excuse me, it's on the list of things that we need to get done. Monument sign on here north by the airport. As the Sky Harbor Ramada Project moves along, we're going to work on having a sign installed that says, "Welcome to the City of Prospect Heights." It'll be viewed from motorists going southbound down Milwaukee Avenue. We currently have one on Schoenbeck and Palatine, we have on 83 at Euclid by the Chase Bank. And hopefully within the next two months, our third sign, which is going to be on north Milwaukee Avenue over near Prizer Animal, will be installed. We're waiting on an IDOT permit for that. Sorry.
And did we file that, Mark?
A little while ago.
Perhaps?
Perhaps.
Last summer?
Yes, yes. It's, it got verbally approved in December, let's put it that way. But that's going to get in place. And our contractor is excited to have warmer weather too to put the sign in. So we weren't going to be digging it in January and February anyway, so their delay really didn't hurt us that bad. Just in case they're watching. So we have that. We move on into the capital. We have vehicles here for this next fiscal year, a new vehicle for the Building Department. The Building Department and City Hall are the bottom of the barrel when it comes to vehicles. They get the leftover vehicles that come out of the Police Department, squad cars that have been retired due to high mileage or usage. And that's what they get. It's really what it is. All the cars here are ex-police vehicles. The Building Department and City Hall staff don't use the vehicles as much as the Police Department. Their cars are a tool. They're on, they're turned on every day and they're driving around. When we get them, they need some work. Dan and his team have had vehicle issues this last few years. We do our best to keep them up and running. Luckily, they're not driving out of town that often, so we can fix them in the field. But at some point, the right thing to do is to get them a more reliable fleet. If we get them a vehicle this year and the next couple of years, they're going to have those for 10 years or longer. Currently, he has a 20, we have three 2013s that are still in service and one 2017 car out of the four that are here at City Hall. So, and they all have 100, well, three of them have 100,000 miles on them. So one's less. So that's for that. We have two police squad cars on here, which is Milo's department, coming out of the DEA Fund. There was a couple of years that we didn't purchase new vehicles, COVID, some other things, the renovations at the Police Department last year. Again, the police vehicles are tools and they're driven every day and they're driven hard when needed. And a reliable vehicle is very important. Just a few months or six months ago, there was an issue. They had to try to catch up to somebody and the vehicle failed on them. Nothing more embarrassing than not getting the bad guy is that you have to get towed back. So the good news is, we're going to get back on track with proper replacement for police vehicles. The sewer truck on here, we are currently driving a 1999 Sterling Vaccon Sewer Rig. It is the most expensive vehicle Public Works will ever buy. It's like buying a fire truck. Ours is currently a 1999. We do not use it every day. It's used for emergencies and for regular routine maintenance. It's half a million dollars for a base model. As the council has seen, this has been on our list for years and we just keep pushing it off a little farther. We have it pushed off a few more years. They're not getting any cheaper, but we're still using what we have. It's still running. We're not in a critical condition with it. And we've had a few occurrences this last couple of years that our vehicle just isn't strong enough to handle the projects that we have and we call in a contractor with a million-dollar piece of equipment to do the work. So we do have a backup plan. Because we don't have a brand-new one in our hand today isn't stopping us from doing what we need to do, but down the road, ours will just be past, it's just, it's not going to be serviceable anymore. It's a Sterling, if anybody's even heard of a Sterling, they're not really made that much anymore. So...
Does it have antique plates?
Antique plates would be a great idea. Something we're working on in the background here, it's been a lot of conversation, is the Fire Department's expansion. They came out to us and talked about the need for additional parking and stormwater control. We've had some great conversations with the Fire Department and our Natural Resource Commission. We had the project slated, we called the Commons, the Public Service Commons for the area between these two buildings. After conversations with the Fire Department, we've kind of morphed things around a little bit on the need for parking and what we could do for stormwater management in this area. This proposal that we're moving forward with is the best design for this area. Originally, we had a meeting space in the middle, we had a little path, a lot more greenery, a lot more natural plantings. But as the needs for this location changed, the Fire Department will benefit with the additional spaces. The Police Department is benefiting because there'll be additional spaces. We're going to be able to rework the back area into having secured parking in the back of the Police Department. This change is based on the needs for the Fire Department. So for their project to be fruitful, they have an investment into work on our property to benefit them and us. So this comes out as, I'll say, a zero cost to the city in the big picture of improvements that we would not have funded. We scraped to get $20,000 together to do the Commons project. That is still happening, but it's just kind of, the turf is changing a little bit. This has been a lot of labor between their engineers, our engineers, city staff, Peter, Joe, Dan and I, and our engineer, Dan Strahan, sitting together trying to come up with the best plan. It benefits us, we have the Fire Department investing in our property, which we own, which we'll have an agreement with them for parking. It really, it took a lot to get to this point and I'm really pleased that it's going to move forward. So that's what you guys will see. The Natural Resources Commission obviously lost some of their original plan, but they are excited to move forward with working on the southern end, I'll call it, of the Commons area. They're going to put a small pad in for a table. The memorial trees will stay in place. We'll have detention, volume control, and there'll be some prairie plantings over on the maple side in the parkway that will not affect future plans if we do need to expand the Police Department. Our stormwater worries at that point will all have already been covered and compensated for. So if in the future we have the opportunity to expand the Police Department, we won't be worried about stormwater. So it's really coming together as a great project. We talked about that one. That was it. I think that wraps up my portion of tonight's event. Any questions? Joanna?
Hi, Mark, I have a question. The mini excavator, how many hours do you think we would be using something like that in a year's time?
Hard for me to put numbers on it. I mean, 100, a couple hundred hours. I have five projects already that I know that we need to do. We've talked about renting a machine like this in the past. We've talked about leasing them. And we've stayed away from leasing equipment. We've done very good at purchasing and then maintaining them for the amount of use that we get. And obviously, we have a Vaccon that's a 1999. Good thing we never leased that because we'd still be paying for it.
Have we ever, have we ever rented them?
We've rented equipment on some project, not a mini excavator. Typically, we've had other projects where we've had to contract it out to get the work done. We've rented chippers, we've rented brushhogs, things like that, and we ended up buying our own eventually.
Yeah, it is rentable, just...
It is rentable, yes. But for all the different factors that we have, it's the timing of it too, is we can do a project and not have to send guys to go get a machine and rent it. At 7:00 AM, we're digging a hole. Or at 2:00 AM, we're not waiting for someone to show up to do a project. If we have a water main break, this will be the preferred method. So we have a few areas where our water main runs tight between some buildings. This having a rotating head and a sidetrack ability, we could get in there and pull material out. Our backhoe will do it. In some cases, we'll use that based on depth and location, but this, they call it a track hoe or a mini excavator, have become very universal. And even just the forestry aspect of it, the clearing the mile of Lake Milwaukee Avenue that we do behind the wall and stuff like that. So we did talk about it, but it just, having the ability to have it in our hands and use it for any occurrence, even if it's just a culvert pipe where we have traffic concerns. We did a project on Elm this last year and we had to take the road out because our backhoe, with the boom in the bucket, we blocked the road to get our digging in the right place. With a machine like this, we could be right in one lane of traffic and keep everything flowing and not, we had buses and stuff backed up. It was an emergency that we get it done because the road had failed, but it's nice if we have something that's a little more maneuverable, so...
I didn't know that we had to use it that often, so I was just curious.
Yeah, it, we have, like I said, we have about five projects that we're just, we don't want to contract out because we can do it ourselves.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
What's the, what's next on the timeline for budget?
So this was our second presentation. Now we're looking ahead to the next meeting, which is Tuesday, April 15th. That'll be the first read. Between now and then, if anybody has any questions, wants more detail, which is to discuss, reach out to anyone on the team, Joe, Peter, Mark, Dan, Milo, myself, Bob. We're happy to get you whatever information you'd like. So first read on Tuesday, April 15th, and then final approval, we're looking for April 28th, the second meeting in April.
The 15th is also our public hearing, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the 16th. We're off a bit because of the holiday. So we've got a Tuesday meeting instead of Monday.
Okay. Thank you. We'll continue here. Item five, we have no appointments, confirmations or proclamations. Item six, public comments on agenda matters. Do we have any filled out?
Yes, we have these three gentlemen, Isai?
Isai.
Isai, sorry. Yes, their topic is about THC.
I have some packets to give out as well.
Please state your name and your address.
Yes, so my name is Isai Adlojaber and I'm going to be a potential business owner in Prospect Heights. Do you mind if I give out?
Sure.
For every other, I apologize for that.
What is the topic of the...
THC.
You can pass it down, you can share.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we should ask about that.
No, it's all right. Yeah, that's all right.
You want one, Mike?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Is everyone ready?
Do you have an extra one?
That's all right, no worries.
Okay.
Okay. So today, I'm going to be talking about obviously not restricting Delta products in Prospect Heights, Illinois. As you can see here, we are going to be potentially a business owner in Prospect Heights. As you can see here, with the potential Delta ban, it would be a $300,000 decrease in our revenue. We have owned a bunch of businesses in our lives, and it makes up around 50% of our revenue. And as you can see here, it translates to $30,000 in tax revenue as well. Over the course of five years, it will be around $136,000 in tax revenue. If you would like to go on the next page. So here are some key advantages for the policy revision. As you can see here, it will be around $30,000 in the first year in tax revenue. It will also increase foot traffic as well, because if customers are coming in and they know there's Delta products, they've come in the store and also the surrounding businesses as well. And as you can see here, there will be a $300,000 annual increase in the store as well with the product available. As you can see here, we do take our product very seriously. All of our products are lab-tested as well to make sure it's the highest quality. Now, as you can see here, quality manufacturing as well, we know where it's coming from as well, and we have all the ingredients as well for each of the products. And then also, we have professional packaging as well, so if a child is able to hold on to it, they're unable to open up the packaging because of his child proof. And then we also have strict age verification as well. As you can see here, all of our stores have ID verification, so it will check if there's any fake IDs, and also, they have to be up age of 21 and over. We have a zero tolerance policy as well if you are under 21, and then we have a clear signage as well for every single store. And then some of the kind of consequences for restricting Delta, kind of that loss of tax revenue, over $136,000 in lost tax revenue. If customers are unable to get the products in Prospect Heights, they would just go to neighboring cities as well to retrieve the products as well. So instead of restricting the product, maybe have maybe higher like age verification and also making sure the product is very high quality as well. That is all I have for today. Does anyone have any questions?
Where are you looking to purchase property? Are you purchasing a business?
So the business is literally right next door. It's that kind of plaza over by City Hall. It's that plaza like right next to it.
For your information, they're proposing looking at 4 North Elmhurst Road at the State Farm property, correct? Is that the one you're looking at?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And what kind of business is this?
This is going to be a vape store.
A vape store?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And what else are you going to sell, these size Delta products?
Vape products, so like nicotine products, and then also like Delta products as well.
And when you say you're a prospective purchaser, what have you done so far?
So I've talked to the landlord already, I've met with him and stuff like that. He made us aware about the potential ban for the Delta products, so we came here today and kind of discussed like kind of our thoughts and kind of like our past experience with it as well. So we have looked at potential properties in the area. We also have, almost after this meeting, I mean, if it gets on ban, we're going to be signing the lease, so.
Where are you located otherwise?
So we have a couple locations in Wisconsin, and then we have a location in Round Lake as well.
And you sell Delta products in Round Lake?
Yep.
And in Wisconsin?
Yep.
Your issue is just the Delta, not the Cradium?
What was it?
Just the Delta product?
Yes.
Not Cradium?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for coming here, but you know, what you'd be asking would be very difficult to segregate to one person, you know, if it's not addressed as a whole, it's hard to do it store by store, right? You can't say, "You can do it," but you can't, right?
Right.
So it's a decision that the council has to make to say that we just don't want it at all, or we just have to be available to everybody. And that's where we're at right now.
What is the difference between the Delta products and the other products that we're talking about banning?
Which other product?
Cradium.
Cradium? That is, that's like a whole different level. I mean, it's more of a, the Delta, we don't even touch that stuff. I mean, it's not regulated in some places. I know some places are trying to propose a ban on it, but Delta is obviously a lot safer than that.
Why aren't you just looking to do a dispensary?
Well, dispensaries, I mean, if you really think about it, it's super hard to obviously get a license and stuff like that, and it's like millions of dollars to start up one as well. And obviously.
Is that a more logical place for it?
Well, if you look at dispensaries and stuff like that, I mean, obviously, it's legal now in Illinois, and most of the dispensaries, top dispensaries are selling Delta as well. So they're, obviously, if you get a medical card, I mean, you're able to get it, and even without a medical card, you're able to get it as well. And they are selling that Delta as well, even at these very top level dispensaries. So kind of my proposal is like, instead of just like banning it, like we should have like higher restrictions as well.
Embrace it.
Exactly, absolutely. I mean, instead of like, like they can literally go to any neighboring places around here and grab it as well.
We have a dispensary in town, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Any other questions? No?
Do we have, I have a question. Do we have any other vape locations in Prospect Heights?
Yeah, so we have one on Rand Road.
We have one on Rand Road. We've got one in the east side at the Milwaukee Plaza Center. We have a couple of convenience stores that also sell vape products and other products currently. Those products are not prohibited through our zoning code or building code. I think the number is about seven facilities right now currently sell that information. Chief, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Is there any more information we can get on these Delta products that you could provide?
Yes, if you want a list after this meeting, I'm more than happy to send it over.
Okay. Yeah, we like that.
Do you do this volume in your other stores? Where are you getting this data?
This is being very conservative.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got this data here, where did that come from?
This is just from like years of experience and stuff like that. Like we've, we have family members, we have ours ourselves, so we're able to like estimate pretty well how much we're going to be making in tax revenue and obviously, our tax revenue and our sales revenue as well.
So that doesn't reflect then what you're making in your store in Round Lake?
We're making over a million dollars.
Round Lake is the more than.
Come up to the microphone, because, no, you can come up, come on up. You're part of his request.
So Round Lake actually does more revenue than this. I just wanted to say this.
Is Round Lake a bigger store or about the same size?
It's a bit bigger, but it's also a bigger population over there, so.
What about your Wisconsin stores? Are they the same size as the one you're looking at purchasing here?
The location I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Some of them are about the same size, while a lot of them are bigger than that.
Well, how many locations do you have in Wisconsin?
We have four.
You have four?
Yeah.
Where in Wisconsin?
Gentlemen, please introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm Mohammed Adlejaber.
Hi, my name is Adam Assad. So we have four locations in Wisconsin. We have also the kind of location in Round Lake. All of them are all about the same size. They do roughly about the same thing in sales with Delta and kind of vape. Some of them more Delta, some of them more vape, but that's kind of, the paper that we gave you guys is kind of like an average of, we kind of like added up together, kind of like divided that by the locations that we have and kind of came up with that. Usually, that's like our average kind of business. We have some of them that do a lot more sales in Delta and some of them less. And that's how we kind of came up with those numbers.
How come you not, where are you guys from?
Lindenhurst.
You live up north?
Yeah.
How come you don't have other stores in this area?
In this area or in that area?
This area.
To be honest, when we found that location, that was our first time coming to Mount Prospect and Prospect Heights, this area. We always owned like a lot of businesses, and we're like more kind of like focused on our businesses, so we work in our businesses. We work a lot of hours, you know, because we go back to like the underage stuff. A lot of underage people, as you guys know, try to purchase alcohol, or they try to purchase vape and stuff like that. You have to make sure that in your business, you have somebody that's responsible, and nobody does your job like, nobody takes care of your business like you should. So we kind of put more hours. So we have a lot of franchises in like north suburbs, like on the border, and we like to be in our businesses, so we never really, our whole life, kind of, we lived like in the Gurnee and Lake County, and we're just like planning on expanding. We expanded to Wisconsin, trying to expand a little bit more towards like the state of Chicago.
Aren't you worried the state's going to kill this?
What do you mean?
Like, and this whole Delta issue?
I mean, that's true. A lot of villages are trying to ban.
I'm talking about the state, and don't worry about the villages, they'll do what they want, but the state could end it on their own and it'd just go away.
Yeah, we kind of, kind of see that. I don't know if it's going to be anytime soon. I mean, everything has a peak in life, you know.
You haven't hit that yet? You don't think it's hit that yet?
No, I don't think so, yeah. I mean, if you, like I said, everything has a peak, you know? Everything trends at a time. I feel like tobacco shops are trending right now. A lot of people move from cigarettes to vape, you know, and they're just like, kind of like getting more and more popular now. So I don't think that they kind of like peaked yet, or they're going to like ban Delta. And I kind of feel like there's like a lot of different stuff that goes with Delta, you know? There's like THCA, which is also legal, it has the state's THC level, like the low THC level, like a higher THCA level, and that's what dispensaries sell. So I feel like if they banned it in the state, they'll kind of like affect dispensaries too. I don't think they were going to affect dispensaries. If you look at.
But you brought up the dispensaries. If you, to me, the only angle on this thing is the underage part, right? If you're 21 years old, you drive, you know, less than a mile to go to a dispenser and get whatever you want, you know, low, medium, and high potency, right? I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how you guys are able to, I mean, survive based on having these dispensaries near you unless there is that underage angle to it, you know? Because there's no requirement that, for Illinois, that you have to be 21 to buy this Delta, right?
100%, so you have to be 21 to buy. I mean, people are gonna, like, underage is going to be underage. We were all young and kids at one point, and if you smoked cigarettes or if you drank alcohol as a kid, you're going to try regardless, as long as the people that are inside the business are doing their job properly and not selling to underage. That's how we can prevent kids from having vape, Delta, or whatever it is that you have to be over 21, you know, to be able to get their hands on something like that.
Well, so you have four stores in Wisconsin?
Correct.
Okay, and I know she asked what, where in Wisconsin, and are you getting any kickback from the state of Wisconsin, you know, with opening any vape stores? Or are you able to open up? Is there any restrictions in Wisconsin?
No, just like two months ago, two and a half months ago, we opened two more locations in Wisconsin. They don't have any restrictions yet. I know Cradium is banned in Wisconsin, it's always, I think, been banned, but for Delta, it's not banned. We are able to sell it freely as long as whoever's buying it is 21 with like a valid ID.
Are you right over the border then? Are you right over the border?
So we have a few locations. So one of our locations is in Burlington, Wisconsin, the other one's in Hales Corner, one of them is in Bay Shore, and the other one's in Wind Lake, Wisconsin. They're all kind of like, a couple of them are right over the border, so they're closer to kind of like, between Lake Geneva and Ania. And the other one is on the other side of like downtown Milwaukee, it's like 15 minutes away from downtown Milwaukee.
Okay.
And one of them is, I don't know if you guys are familiar with like Southridge Mall, like Highway 100 in Milwaukee. It's, I don't know, it's a small, it's a small like village called Hales Corner. And we sell Delta product in all of those locations.
Okay. And then Round Lake is the only location in Illinois?
Yeah.
And have you tried to get into any other cities? I think that was a question that was asked besides Round Lake.
We have, our family owns a lot of different vape shops, a lot of different locations. That's our problem, is our family's really big. Like when I tell you huge, like, Middle Easterns don't have one and two kids, they have like, I'm one of nine, you know? So with, our kind of issue is, we don't like to be in our family's competitors, you know? We have a lot of smoke shops in Round Lake, Waukegan, North Chicago, Zion, Gurnee, you know, there's like, we have like a lot of businesses over there, so. And all those villages are very small, and they're, I don't know if there are the population difference between here and there, but I feel like over here, there's more, like, the population is bigger. Like the closer you get to the city, the bigger the population is.
We know Prospect Heights only have 16,000 people compared to us, over 30,000.
The location that we did find is kind of Prospect Height and Mount Prospect, kind of, you know what I mean? So kind of like thought about it, where we can have people from Prospect Height and Mount Prospect, so kind of like adding two populations together. So our problem is, the reason why, like, other reasons why we're coming over here is because kind of like the traffic, like a mile down from over here, there's like all the bigger stories and stuff like that, and the traffic that we see over here. So there's like more, it's like more alive over here. Our issue over there is wherever we go, we're going to be our family's competition, and that's not good.
But time to move.
What is it?
Time to move.
I know, I wish I could.
That's why they're moving.
You know, with us, it's kind of like, we're very like respectful, you know? I mean, we like to follow the rules, we like to, you know, family comes first before anything, you know?
Yeah.
So we don't want to like bother them, and we don't want them to bother us, you know?
If I may provide some feedback and some opinion to the council, I respect your pitch here, but in my sincere belief, the reason they're targeting Prospect Heights is because every community around us has banned these products. And so we're the last community that doesn't have an ordinance banning the sale of these products. That is my belief, is why they're here and looking to open up a shop in Prospect Heights.
I just wanted to flesh out my whole business model here anyway, just to hear about it, but he is right.
Sure.
I mean, we didn't ban this because, or we're not looking to ban it for any other reason, and it's something we don't want in town. So I mean, we have, we have one dispensary, highly regulated and controlled cameras out the wazoo in there, regulated by the state. This is the Wild West, and as regulated as you guys might make it for your location, not everybody would be like that. So I have to err on the side to say, I wouldn't want that to happen where it just explodes here and we can't control it. So that's why this is before us now. So we appreciate you coming by, but I think, unless there's anything else you want to present, we would move on.
I would like to get some more information about these Delta products, because I'm kind of on the fence here. I mean, I'm not saying that, I mean, the Cradium, I understand, but I mean, you know, it's revenue to the city, I would be, you know.
It's an issue, it's not the revenue, and just to be clear on your model here, you showed 10% income. We're like a point and a half, because the rest of that goes to RPA, the state of Illinois, Cook County, as far as sales tax goes. Cook County as far as sales tax goes. Where do you get this 10% coming to the city?
We have, we look at the sales tax.
That's not all ours, you know that, right?
Yeah, it was just, it's very hard to.
You're talking 10 or 12 grand, not $60,000 a year. So that's a big difference. Then we have to regulate it. Then we have to make sure that we're making sure that they're doing what they say they're going to do. There's just no, there's no upside to it for us. I, I would agree with you. If there was $60,000 a year and we could strongly regulate it and make sure it's working, maybe, but you know, so it's not getting in the hands of kids, but you just can't, you're going to add a burden to the, to the, to the city to regulate this and make sure that.
But what are we regulating except to not to sell it to underage, right? That's what we're reg, I mean, that's the only thing we're regulating.
Right. For $10,000, $12,000 a year, it's not, to me, it's not, not something we should even be contemplating.
Well, but it's still revenue. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, but can't just do revenue.
And you had to get, I do want to mention that like these numbers are very conservative as well. I know some of our businesses are over at one million dollar threshold. So I just, and also like you could use that same analogy for alcohol and tobacco products as well. I mean, obviously all this stuff is very regulated as well. I mean, you could use that same principle for the Delta products as well. I mean, why fight this issue? Or we could just make it just more restrictions if that makes sense.
But with alcohol and tobacco, that's federally regulated, state regulated, county regulated, we don't have to really worry about that, right? I mean, it's done for us. This, we would be owning our own, you know, our own regulation. We would be on our own with it. And for the smaller term that's there, it's just not worth it. We have plenty to do. I, I don't want to task our police department with having to stop by these places constantly for 12 grand a year. Even let's say you doubled your amount in like a million dollars, let's say 20 grand a year. It just, to me, it's not, it's, it's just not worth it.
Like we, we have so much experience with owning stores and stuff like that.
You do, you do. But I can't, we can't write this ordinance to say you can do it and nobody else can't. That's the problem. I agree with you. You're really good at what, what you do. It sounds like you have it down, but that's you. That's not the guy who sees you do it and wants to open a place up down the street and do the same thing and say, well, I'm going to beat him because I'm going to go chintzy on my security and I'm not going to worry about IDs, right? And the state's not there to help us. The county's not there to help us, you know? We're on our own and, and I, I don't want to be known as a Delta city because you let one in and now everybody can come in, even though they do a good job.
But we don't have any, we don't have a lot of vape shops. It's not like we have like five or six or 10 vape shops.
Yeah, it looks like there's, it's probably us and two other people, so.
It took, right. Till you, till, till they see that we're allowing it, then Katie bar the door.
I, I would like to table our vote on this. I mean, I, kratom is one thing, but I'd like to table our vote till I get more information on Delta products.
If I may provide a little bit of feedback, kratom, just like any other THC product, but both products, they, they, they have addictive and dependence, an essence to them. They can be harmful to various parts of the body.
Well, so can THC.
Sure. And I'm talking about THC and kratom. And, and the issue that this creates is because many of the communities around us have banned both THC and kratom products. It would draw such a, such an attention and an eye to Prospect Heights in a very negative way. One, it would be that a lot of individuals would look to open stores and sell THC, kratom, Delta products in Prospect Heights. It would draw the attention of many consumers, thus creating, as the mayor pointed out, a lot of work for the police department and also code enforcement to help and try to regulate this. I, I don't really see a benefit to our community or, or to residents of Prospect Heights to become the Delta kratom THC city when everyone around us has decided to ban this. There is no benefit or upside to allowing the sale of these products in Prospect Heights. Essentially none.
I see your point about the kratom, but I'm not necessarily seeing your point about the Delta. So I still would like to table this and get more information on Delta. Before we take a vote, we're also missing one alderman here, so I would like to table it. I can make a motion to table this.
Yeah, the, the, the ordinance is not up right now to make the motion on this. We're still in public comment.
All right, well, we'll wait till we get this.
Yeah, we'll wait till we get that. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else? Clerk? Any other?
Uh, no.
All right. Item seven, consent agenda. We have item A, resolution R 2514, staff memo and resolution establishing an ad hoc 50th anniversary celebration committee for the city of Prospect Heights. This is just to set up a committee. We can fill the committee, don't do that right now, but it, we'll do that over, over time here. But just to set up a committee to kind of organize any kind of special events we might do for our 50th anniversary.
That's right. I would, I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight, old business, ordinance O 2504, staff memo and ordinance amending title to chapter six of the Prospect Heights City Code regarding products containing tetrahydrocannabinol, cannabinoid, THC. That's the second reading.
And I would like to table that. I have a motion to table.
Hearing no second. Motion fails. So any motion to approve?
So move. Cameron.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We can have discussion again.
Again, I mean, I would like some information, more information on Delta as opposed to the kratom. I don't have a problem with banning the kratom. I do have issues regarding the Delta. I understand what you're all saying, but I'm not yet convinced that we should ban the Delta products. So I'd like to get more information on it. I, I don't have a whole lot of information on it and it's none been provided to any of the council members. So I'd like to, I'd like to get a better understanding of what we're dealing with.
We can, you can, we can get more information on it and if, if the council changes our mind, we can always undo an ordinance.
Well, I'd rather not vote until I have enough information. I mean, I can't vote, my vote is not going to be a, a, a yes vote, I can tell you that, without knowing more about what this is about, this product and what it does and where it's sold and where it's not sold and what the deal is with this. And I understand your position on it, but we haven't had a lot of discussion on it. We haven't had a lot, we don't know much about the other products. So I'd like to have some more information.
Okay. So is there any other comments or questions on it?
Is Delta THC?
It's, it's.
It's just a better quality.
Synthetic, no, it's synthetic. It's not from the plant itself, correct? It's, it's lab made, made in the laboratory.
Well, the, the products that are being sold, they're packaged as edible, THC infused drinks, various products. And so it's not regulated by any governing body, state or federal, how this THC is being infused into these products. And that's really one of the major concerns. Now, they did talk about professional packaging and everything of that sort. That is the big, that is one of the concerns on the city. Now THC is the chemical that's found in cannabis and a lot of these other products, but it's when it comes to Delta that the levels are, the amount of Delta and the amount of THC that's in these products, but specifically the products that are infused with the, with the substance is that it's not overly regulated. It's, 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 it's a big taboo subject for me, if you will. It's not very well known and that is really the reason why a lot of the suburbs around us have decided to put an ordinance in place because the state hasn't, or the FDA hasn't really regulated this product very well.
So when they talk about professional packaging then, what do you guys mean? I mean, it's not regulated and we don't, I mean, I'm not saying it's federally regulated. We know it's not. But what does a professional packaging do? I mean, what, what is that, what, what kind of, you know, regulation does that provide at all?
Well, I think when they spoke about professional packaging, it was more for child resistance so an underage individual or child could not tear open the package and get into the contents of it. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
And this includes edibles and drinks and all kinds of products?
Well, not drinks. It's obviously harder packaging because you can just screw it on, but with edibles and stuff like that, they use professional packaging for the, for the child who obviously opened it.
Certainly an 18-year-old could open it. And they're underage, right?
Yeah.
But you can't buy it if you're 18.
You can use that same concept for tobacco products.
Yeah.
And you can buy these products at the, at the dispensaries?
Yeah, correct.
That's correct.
We only have one dispensary, I believe, in Prospect Heights.
That is correct.
That's what we agreed upon.
Just, just for clarification, if we do vote on this, a yes vote is a yes on banning it, correct?
Yes, I'm passing the ordinance which bans.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're approving the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Nay.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item nine, new business. A is R, Resolution R 2516, staff memo and resolution approving local funding commitment for motor fuel tax funds for various street resurfacing projects not to exceed $326,334.38. Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? I have a quick question. This, is this, this is a different motor fuel tax money than, I, I noticed that there was an explanation that it was like some kind of super motor fuel tax money versus just the regular. So is this included in our balance of our motor fuel tax?
These are RBI funds.
Okay, which is different than.
Which is, which is Rebuild Illinois Funds, which are motor fuel tax.
But they expire?
But those are the ones that have the expiration date of July to be spent.
And this is the amount that's expiring? Is that why we're approving this amount or is this a project amount?
That is the, that is the leftover amount from the Owen Street project.
Okay. Okay. And we will be able to get it spent before we need to, before we close it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, resolution R 2519, staff memo and resolution approving amendment number four to the intergovernmental agreement between the state of Illinois, Department of Natural Resources, and the state of Illinois, Department of Transportation, and the city of Prospect Heights, and the village of Mount Prospect for the Upper Displanes River Road Damage Reduction Project Element Levy 37A. Need a motion to approve?
So move, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And just for the record, I signed one of these extensions or amendments 17 years ago. That's very scary.
Terrible.
Very scary. So this is, I think, a fourth amendment to it? Fourth or fifth?
Yes, sir. Fourth.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Item C, resolution R 2520, staff memo and resolution approving an amendment to the license for use, temporary construction easement, and perpetual access maintenance agreement with our Redeemer Lutheran Church.
So move, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Item D, ordinance O 2505, staff memo and ordinance establishing water rates for fiscal year 2526. This is a first reading, so no action is required. If you have any questions, give Joe a call. And this will be our next meeting on April 16th?
16th, Tuesday.
Okay.
15th.
15th?
15th, that's right. Because it's 14th to Monday.
Okay.
Please get us a calendar.
Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports, February financial report be presented by Assistant Finance Director Tannahill.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and present the February financial report for the, which covers the last 10 months. We're 83% of the year. Our city total revenues represent 72% of the budget, while our expenses reflect 59% of the budget. Some highlights and, I say maybe lowlights, but revenues for the tourism district, like we talked about in the present, budget presentation, are below budget expectations, again because of the one hotel that's closing and the other one going in, filing for bankruptcy. So far this year, we received, as of February, we received $265,000 in vehicle sticker revenue. We are still, people are still coming in. Over the last week and a half, we've seen an influx of people coming in and buying their sticker. Just so listeners know, the deadline is March 31st, which is Monday, to purchase your sticker at the price, at the regular price. After March 31st, the prices will go up for late fees charged on that. All the other revenues that we see are within line of budget expectations. Also, interest income is again at, showing strong as compared to budget. And our place for eating taxes at about 98% of the budget so far this year, which is a good thing. We still have two more months of this budget, so we're hoping to see place for eating tax above our budget expectations on there. Water and sewer are again are within the budget. And other than that, if you have any questions, try to answer them for you.
Do we know why the phone utility tax is so high?
There is a, a payment that was made on the phone utility tax that when I called the Illinois Department of Revenue, they checked into it too. We got an extra payment from one of the utilities and that was within line. They couldn't give me a lot of explanation on why, but they said it's, we were supposed to get it.
Okay.
So it was an extra, I believe, $60,000 that came in. And they held it for a while and then they, once they got clarification, they said it's our money talking to them, so.
All right, thank you. We'll start on the right with staff reports. Peter?
Uh, thank you, sir, nothing but, I, I, nothing but, serious, but I, real quick, I just wanna emphasize, uh, that we are in the final stretch of vehicle stickers, so please, uh, buy vehicle stickers, uh, because I know I wanna be at the front desk April 1st, when somebody comes in and says, "Oh, I forgot." And we will be charging late fees on April 1st. There is no, there is no reason why you can't get in here this week or even Monday. So, please come in and buy your stickers. Everyone else is doing it, please be compliant with the city's regulations. Thank you very much.
Sure. Mark?
Uh, just to remind residents that yard waste started last Friday, and, uh, make sure you look at Flood Brothers' website to make sure you're putting it out properly. That's it. Thank you, sir, I've had enough time tonight.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Uh, just a quick reminder to everyone, it's, uh, starting into spring construction season. Uh, if you're planning those remodeling projects, home improvement projects, or any of those, please, um, get your plans in early, allow time for reviews and proper, um, permit issuances, and remember to contact us for your required inspections. Additionally, I am gonna do the reminder again, please keep your eyes out for fraudulent contractors. Um, they will be coming up, starting door-to-door, um, when the weather breaks. They'll be offering you incredible offers. Please know that if you didn't call them, that they're out trying to course you into doing something you may not have budgeted for. You can always call the City Hall to make sure that the contractors are registered with us. You can make sure that the project they're saying doesn't require a permit, whether it really does or doesn't, and 90% of the time, those projects do require permits. Those are telltale signs of someone trying to commit a fraudulent act. So, thank you very much, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Joe? Lloyd? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two quick things. I'd like to highlight that this Friday, March 28th, at 4:00 PM, right here at City Hall, we'll be hosting a swearing-in ceremony for Officer Ryan Hart. He will be transitioning from part-time to full-time. And lastly, I'd like to highlight, uh, a very big achievement of our CERT program and police volunteer members. CERT program, Community Emergency Response Team, a program the Police Department has put on in collaboration with the Fire District, um, training, um, our police volunteers for emergency preparedness. It just happened to be on March 22nd that, um, uh, two of our police volunteers, members of the CERT program, were out in community policing, Marcia Gendreus and Angelo Petrotos, when they heard a call of a missing juvenile, endangered juvenile that had ran away from home. They decided to continue patrolling and ended up locating the juvenile, alerted the police, and, um, gave him the proper medical assistance that he needed. So, we just want to, uh, recognize them for their outstanding service. And now Alderman Dolick is, um, a successful graduate of the CERT program this Saturday.
Thank you. Elected officials on the left? Anybody?
No, thank you.
Am I right?
I was just gonna say, uh, I've noticed and appreciated the, the electronic signage that's been floating around town, reminding people of their, uh, need to get their city stickers, so, uh, no one has an excuse. But I appreciate all of that, uh, that's all I have, thank you, sir.
Just one thing, there was an interesting thing in the paper about a, a lawsuit between Arlington Heights, and I think it was Rolling Meadows, uh, that went to the Illinois Supreme Court, and it had to do with sales tax, that it's going to the wrong towns, so it doesn't just happen to us, it happens to a lot of people. And I guess the long and short was, is, uh, Arlington Heights lost out because they should've known better, basically was the, the answer, I guess, because they were able to see on their, when they issued the permits for the work or whatever, they would've known they were gonna get it, and if they didn't see it coming, they weren't entitled to it. And, and Rolling Meadows was having nothing to do with giving back any money, so, uh, it was interesting, decision there. That was it. From me, approval of warrants. Will clerk read the, um, the warrants and the wire payments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the total of the wire, I'm sorry, the total of the expenditures was $673,461.8. We had a wire payment on March 7th, payroll, $182,311.73. We also had an IMRF payment in February, amounting to $17,246.54. The total warrant then being $873,019.35. For council's approval, please.
So, we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, any public comment on non-agenda items? Nope. Uh, we have no executive session, so there's no action on that executive session, it didn't happen. So, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?